I'll call the acting planning board meeting October 19th, 2023 to order. And first thing is a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe you can do the table of minutes again at the time, unless you can do the ones from last week, right? I don't know. Seven, you were here last week.
Yeah, I wasn't here last week.
Adam, were you here last week?
Yep.
Andrew?
I was here, yeah.
You can do last week's minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for October 5th, 2023, as submitted.
A second?
Okay.
Did you designate the alternate?
I'm going to designate two. All right, well, since we don't have enough regular members tonight, I'll be designating both Adam Brock and Andrew Johnson
Yep.
as voting members tonight.
Okay, you want to make that again?
Thank you, Pat.
I make a motion that we accept the planning board minutes for October 5th of 2023, as submitted.
A second.
All in favor? And we'll table the minutes from... Are we all caught up on minutes?
No, we have two minutes, sets of minutes that would have been tabled.
The 7th and the 21st?
Yeah, we just need all the members to show up that were at the house meetings.
Yeah. So we'll table those for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The other members who were present at that meeting.
Voting for them at the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. That's why I didn't vote on the minutes you did do, because I wasn't at the meeting.
Right, right, right. Got it.
Yeah, we get messed up on that sometimes. Oh, yeah, it's a... All right, so first on the agenda, new business. Richard LaFrance, 552 East Shore Drive, application for greatest practical extent. And if you'd just maybe come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do.
I'd like to raise the camp for a full foundation, including the decks for dry storage. And heat.
Give me a second, I'll pull this up. This is a non-conforming lot. I believe the lot itself is only...
Fifty-two hundred square feet?
Ninety-seven feet deep. So he doesn't meet the setback from the water, nor will he meet... Does he meet the setback from the center of the road?
Yeah.
So it's just...
Sorry, so it doesn't meet the setback for what now?
Either one, the road or the water.
Okay.
Says right now, you're about thirty-six feet from the water right now. You're going to stay pretty much in the exact same footprint, or?
I'd like to, yes.
Can you pull off the sideline at all in order to?
I could, my septic's right on that side, on the... My, uh, what's it called?
Kind of where the number twenty-two is.
Uh, where it says point one-three right there? That's where my pump box for the septic goes up.
Yeah.
The driveway behind the house roadside is the septic. Septic tank in chambers, but that's approximately. I would like to keep it where it is. My neighbor here has already signed the variance when I bought the house.
When did you buy the house?
Twenty-ten.
And have you done anything with the septic since then?
Done the what?
How is the septic?
Uh, when I had it inspected, he said it was like brand new. It was built, it was done in the eighties, and the people that were there only gave it up a few times, a few weeks a year, as far as I know. If it needs to be redone, I mean, I don't mind redoing it. Um, I don't know. I mean, it's in the back, it can be done, it's not a problem.
It says ninety-one, just so you know.
Oh, ninety-one, okay, okay. Thank you.
Signed off in ninety-two.
But like I said, when I had it inspected, the guy said it was in great condition, but...
I mean, you haven't had any issues with it in the last?
I've never had an issue with it.
Twelve, thirteen years you've been there?
Nope, I've had it pumped, um, twenty-twenty, we had it pumped, no issues.
Who did the inspection?
I don't remember.
So you don't have a written?
Oh, no.
Would you be against getting it evaluated? No. By a licensed designer?
He was the main.
It's so close to the water.
So the building was built that close to the water?
It's grandfathered.
Okay.
It's a grandfathered lot.
Right, okay.
But what we have to... What we really need to look at are the septic systems.
Well, I can't get any further. It's on the road, I can't get any further, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just talking about the system itself, you know, just updating.
Okay.
Tank, they have, they have, um, the technology's improved a lot.
Yeah, this is something we talked about in the last meeting, too, about like if, with all these renewals, now might be the time to start doing this, you know, to kind of further protect the...
Because, I don't know, is ninety-one old for a septic system?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty years, yeah, thirty-plus years.
Yeah, the tech is...
So that, I mean, if you did that, you'd probably be able to squeeze over to get to, what is it, ten feet? He needs, he's got seven, I mean, so you'd be able to gain the three feet on the side, maybe.
But his septic has to be at least ten feet off the side, too. And then you have to have room for...
Right, well, maybe, yeah, maybe it wouldn't...
You have room for your slopes.
Pretty good difference between jacking something straight up and then shifting it over seven feet.
Yeah.
Just going straight up and dropping it right back down.
Because the lot's small, it's really small.
No, it's just, I think it was three feet, he'd have to move right to get it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ten feet conforming, but it doesn't bother me. We can't really move it any other direction, so...
Yeah, yeah, for sure. For sure.
Where is the septic in relationship to the driveway?
It is by driveway.
It is the driveway.
Chamber, chamber system.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, seven feet.
Can you show me what you're saying?
Oh, on the last page of the package, there's kind of this, I mean, he's just, he's he's seven feet off, and he needs just ten feet.
Oh, I see.
But, I mean...
Right.
But I don't know if it's necessary.
I mean, the amount of ground disturbance.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, is the juice worth the squeeze?
Is it worth it?
Is the juice worth the squeeze?
Probably not.
I would say. No, it's a fine-off.
So you're not really, you're not do... Are you doing the thirty percent expansion?
It already had been done.
Oh.
The tax bedroom was a thirty percent.
That's why I didn't really, wasn't pushing the issue on that form as much, because it's already been done.
Oh, I see.
Um, he's just putting a foundation under it.
Yeah, yeah.
But if I can have thirty more, that'd be fine.
All right, well...
Do you want to go forward with requiring an update to the septic? Or, uh, or just a certification?
Well, I think he has to start with a certification, then if it needs to be done, it needs to be updated, it needs to be redone, um, then you can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, so I bring the certification back here, or to?
Just have it inspected and just bring the inspection notes back to me or whatnot.
Okay.
If you're not having issues with it right now, the chances of them saying that you're going to have to replace it is going to be pretty slim.
Okay.
Do we want to wait on that, or just make it a condition of the?
I would say make it a condition.
Yeah, all right. All right, well, I'm acting chairman, so I'm not going to make the motion, but we're looking for a motion on Richard LaFrance.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application for greatest practical extent for Richard LaFrance. Uh, map one fifty-two, lot twenty-two. Contingent upon the inspection of the and certification of the existing septic system.
Second.
All in favor?
Good.
Good to go? Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I ask you a question? Where you got the lot number from? Andrew, was it just your back? Okay, go ahead.
All right, next up is Nathan Gardner, twenty-seven forty, Route 109, map one forty-one, lot forty-five. Conditional use application for our ground-mounted solar array. So about where is your proposed location?
Approximately halfway on that fence that's in between, lower down, right there. I did bring some pictures from the road. I don't know if they're really any useful, but, um... You want to look at them or not?
Sure.
So you're not looking to take down any more trees or anything?
Sir? Are you looking to take down any more trees or anything?
No.
Are the panels stationary, or do they move?
Uh, these would be stationary.
Yeah.
It's just enough to, you know, support my house. I think, I don't remember the panel count, but it's a one-family size system.
So it's just for personal use?
It is, yeah.
All right, well, I guess we should schedule a site walk. And we might as well schedule a hearing tonight, too, right? Get him, get him in the books, so it doesn't take too long. We just come out, pretty much we look at, visibility is pretty much the biggest thing we're looking at.
Yeah, there's no issue there. You'll see that there, you can't see anything from the road, but
Yeah.
you guys can see that, and we'll come on site.
Can you zoom out a little bit, Jason, so I can see the road again?
My property right there, the field, it's actually elevated a fair amount above the road right there. So you're looking through all the pine trees, and I think in one of the images, you can see the very tip of the barn, but... So it's...
Right, seems like a pretty good location that way.
In relation in the field there, which way are the panels going to be facing?
They would be facing, uh, no, south, obviously, which is down.
Yeah, so they're going to go across then?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I think the, um, you know, the arc of the sun, I think it kind of cocks it slightly at a lower left kind of arrangement, yeah.
It's probably at a fifteen-degree angle, just like that, facing south on that fence line.
Pass those back. Excuse me.
Do I try and do the site walk before the November 2nd meeting?
Give me a second, I need to see what's on our agenda for the second. I think I have a pretty heavy schedule right now.
Well, we wouldn't have to do much discussion on that
Right.
on that day, if we just did the site walk, and then a lot of the discussion would be after the hearing, or?
We have a public hearing for, um, herd, herd, herd storage lumber on that day as well.
Yeah.
Uh, give me one second, I'll tell you. Ah, that's on my office computer, not this computer. Never mind. Um, I'll squeeze it in, I don't think it'll take long anyway.
Hmm, we could do that.
It doesn't really matter, because I think everything's moving forward. The stor, the storage, as well as solar's coming in on the first weekend, so that's going to keep on... So I guess it really doesn't matter. It's up to you guys.
Right, right, we would vote on it on the sixteenth.
I think, I think this one isn't going to take up a lot of time.
Yeah, no, me either.
Just get, just, do you want to do it on the second, that's fine.
Oh, what does the board think, anybody have a?
That's fine with me.
Second class. I'm just going to close the agenda, the agenda to now, so we're not taking any more on.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could do the site walk and not even have, have them on the agenda for that night. Just so we see the thing, and then we can be thinking about it for the hearing.
Let me go see what's on there. I'll be right back.
Either way, I mean...
And he probably wouldn't be first on the agenda, you'd just have to sit and wait.
Yeah.
It's a...
Yeah. Yeah, we could do it like that.
The sixteenth, the sixteenth would be nice and quick.
Yeah. For bigger projects, it's good to have time between the site walk and the hearing, but with these sort of projects, it's I don't know, it's necessary. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, either, either method, we'd end up voting on the sixteenth, so we can't make it any quicker than that. Yeah.
That's great, what's the projection on this project? Is it going to be able to satisfy a hundred percent of your electrical needs?
It's supposed to do a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, really?
We'll see.
And the life, the life of the panels?
Maybe it was a hundred and ten, what's that?
What's the life of the panels?
Uh, they said about thirty years.
And then at that time, who's responsible for them, you are, or the installer?
I would imagine I would be.
Yeah.
You know, I guess, maybe if I was to replace them, maybe whoever, you know, does the work might take them out, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because you're buying them outright, and now you're leasing them?
Buying them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you guys will be fine for the first week in November.
We were just saying, it kind of made sense what Dave was saying for the, just do the hearing in the site walk on the sixteenth.
Close that agenda off for the, that first week in November, and just start clean with this project.
It's up to you. Like I said, it doesn't matter, because acting solar is going to be on the sixteenth, so is in herd storage, unless you guys approve herd storage on the next meeting.
We might after the hearing, right? Do we have?
So, yeah.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't really know about that.
You know, winter's coming. If he wants to get this in, we should probably get him on the, on sooner rather than later. That's my personal opinion. So he's not waiting.
I think the first weekend, I think you can do both in the first week in November.
Yeah.
Most of all.
I just get it over with?
Yep.
Okay.
So a site walk on the second at five o'clock?
Verify it is the second.
And hearing on the sixteenth?
Uh, you guys want, can you make a motion on that one, because it's going to be a public hearing in site one?
I'll make a motion that we do a site walk on November 2nd, uh, for the ground-mounted solar array. As well as, um, the public hearing, um, for the property located at twenty-seven forty, uh, Route 109, tax map one forty-one, lot zero four five.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.
Just meet you guys at the house at five, and then come back here.
Yeah, five o'clock in the sixth.
All right, thanks.
So we're going to try, we're trying to squeeze in the hearing on the second, so?
Yeah, that's a good point, in terms of trying to get the project in before.
Yeah, yeah. Usually, we can't make the next meeting with the hearing, because it just takes too long.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we got rid of that because of the seven days.
Oh, good, okay.
Seven days to ten, so that's why we can do it right.
Good, all right. Yeah, yeah, these sort of projects is good to
And, yeah.
not delay the people. All right, um, yeah, so I think that's about it for tonight.
We have some paperwork for you, we can do it after, or, um, I... So acting solar has given us all the documentation for their new proposal, um, of their downsized solar array. So I, we got that for you. I'm also waiting for, um, I asked for an electronic version of their old, for some reason, I can't find it, um, of what they proposed their first time, which was approved, so I wanted you guys to be able to compare what was accepted and what they're coming in with now, but... I'll give you this stuff now, anyway.
Okay.
I did print up the minutes from the approval of the first one.
Oh, yeah.
It's a saturated market in these parts.
You tried the peaches, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Did anybody think of anything that they thought we should discuss, were changes to the zoning ordinance for this coming year? Seems like people were, kind of want to lay low this year, not, not, uh, put too many things forward, but we still have time.
Oh, plenty of time.
Yeah, if somebody thinks of something, or... We do a lot, you know, there's a lot of different types of changes we do, it's not just, you know, sometimes it's just grammatical changes in the ordinance, sometimes it's all revamping of different sections. Sometimes it's just, you know, working it so that the timeframe is, is easier to fulfill for the applicant. Like with the hearings, we made it, we brought it from ten days to seven days that we have to put out public notice and things like that.
Okay.
But, you know, it's often, people have some issue that, that brings them to the board, too, sometimes, that they want to put forward, and talk about. We've got, you know, a few meetings here, and then we get into the holidays, and then it's kind of after the holidays, we need to have stuff ready, so there's only so much time, but...
Usually, we have to have so many amendments, so many, they call them articles, we have to have them by the end of February, is when we have to let them know how many we're going to have. And then by mid-March, we have to present them to the warrant finance committee, um, so, and the, and the board of selectmen, so that they can review them, and so, yeah, if we're going to make changes, we want to be doing them. We want to start them by, you know, next month or December, that way we can fine-tune them and have them go through legal, because we want to make sure that, um, everything is on the up and up.
Yeah.
The town is protected from behind, you know?
Yep.
So if there's something that you're, if you've looked over the ordinance, or there is something that you're concerned about, it's, bring it to the board, so that they can have discussion over it.
Yeah. What are some reasons you would change, like, things have been changed in the past, other than logistical issues, like you said?
Um, last year, we did, we revamped our ordinance to, um... to, I guess, on solar.
Yeah, we did the big soul finally got there.
We didn't have anything in our ordinance for solar except for something like that. We also added a lot of conditions to the approval of, um, mineral extractions, um, sand pits, um, stuff like that, too. More like, so we want more documentation or all, whatever it was, as well as the, um, the sureties and things like that. We also did, you know, the year before, I think we did something for tiny homes.
Okay.
Yeah, things are just passed down from the state. The state says, we're now allowing tiny, tiny homes, but you should adopt it in your ordinance, so then we either come up with language, the, the state gives us their language and sometimes we hire someone to help us with the language, the private, you know, consultant, and put the thing together. But tiny homes was a pretty simple one, it was just deciding where we allow them in the, in the town and, um, kinda like the sizing, things like that, but.
Excuse my ignorance, but like, how do we get notified about these types of changes that come down from the state?
Oh, the state will usually send us an email.
Send, send that you, your, your office an email, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually find out through, and then there's, um, you know, there's a, an online chatter thing that code officers and engineers use, as well as the state.
Okay.
And they'll, uh, there's always something, you know, something just came across my thing of, uh, a community up main was, um, was looking for an ordinance on permanent campers on lots, you know, as housing, stuff like that, so. They'll, another municipality might share their ordinance, that section of the ordinance with that community, um, so that they can add something to their ordinance, so. If there's something that, like I said, if there's something that you guys are looking to do, I mean, that's always an option, too. I, we did that when we did the mineral extractions, as well as the, um, solar, uh, we hired, this is someone else, we, we subbed the solar one out to a consultant group. With the mineral extractions, I, you know, my office went around and, um, pulled other communities that had already established a, a better thing for, uh, better ordinance for mineral extractions. And so the board took pieces of these ordinances, whatever they liked, and they, they made their own ordinance.
Sure.
So we, you know, um, some of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's usually a need.
Right, okay.
You know, the, the mineral extraction wasn't, wasn't because we didn't wanna see that industry, it was because, um, there was a lot of new pits that had just reopened and there was been a lot of concern throughout the town of, you know, the truck traffic and, um, the dangers of the, you know, the trucks. And what is it gonna do to our, what is it doing to the watershed and shit like that?
Okay. Is there a, uh, these applications, are they, is there an, like, an online portal for it to fill out these type, these applications or is it all paper?
For the conditional use?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is an online, uh, portal, um, it's either, you can find it either on, under useful links on our website, or you can find it on, uh, the code enforcement
Okay.
webpage.
Gotcha. And then, is that how most people kinda do it and then?
I actually, so with the conditional uses or the site plan review, um, I don't really particularly care for the online portal one, I'd rather than just give me, uh, a written one like this or, like when, um, these larger projects come in, they give you this, this nice, this binder.
Sure.
And that comes from like, uh, the PDF version.
Okay.
But there is an online portal, you can use it, um, and it's same information.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just not in the same format, which the board is used to using.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, I, I can't see your, um, name, cause it's backwards.
Oh, cause that says it's Chris.
It said, I'm not Chris, I'm not Chris.
Okay, you're Andrew.
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 Yeah.
Did you, um, see, I had a question on the waivers and where we find, you know, documentation, what we should go by, cause the only thing I could find in here was to do with the Board of Appeals, and that's really not appropriate, so that Jason was saying he doesn't like it online. There's a whole book on subdivision and
Yep.
just FYI.
You did, no, I've been going through it and then everything, yeah.
Gavin pointed out that what I was looking for is in here, and it's article twelve waivers, it's page fifty-six, if you wanna familiarize yourself with the criteria that we have to use.
Yep.
Cause I was looking for it in here and I couldn't find it, Gavin told me it was in the subdivision one. Do you have one of those?
I do, yeah, yeah, I've been trying to make my way through it.
Okay.
Piece by piece.
It's on page fifty-six.
There's a lot of information in those, don't expect to remember it all.
Yeah. No doubt. Um, and then when applications come in, um, you guys get them beforehand, right? I don't know, like, would they be available to us before a meeting to review or not?
Well, that's what you guys are getting the solar one right now, they're coming in next
Yep.
in two weeks.
Okay.
So if it's a large project, um, I get it to you in time for you guys to review it, if it's just something simple. And yes, you are more than welcome to come in. I usually require the, the applications to be present in my office one week prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, so if you wanna come in and say, hey, you know, I'm wondering what's on the agenda for next week and do I, can I get a copy of, of that documentation? Yes, you can have it for yourself, but you can't have discussion with other.
Can't have discussion.
Without, outside, outside of a meeting about it.
Sure, 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 yeah. I just wanted to familiarize myself with stuff before, before meetings.
Oh, yeah, the, the bigger applications, you have to
Oh, yeah, for sure.
do that, there's no way.
Sit here during a meeting and try to absorb it?
Yeah, well, sometimes you gotta watch out, cause they do, they'll bring all their, they'll come right in, they'll bring all their materials and they'll lay them out for you and say, alright, what do you think? You know, and you gotta say, well, you know, gotta review them.
Right, yeah, exactly.
But, some, you know, best practical locations, we usually kinda do those off the cuff. Cause it's, we can do a site walk if we, you know, if it looks like a challenging one or whatever, but.
Thanks. Just wanna throw out there at you guys right now. Very good.
Hey, thanks very much for getting this to us ahead of time so we can look at it.
Indeed, indeed.
Yeah, the, the solar project that came before us, was it two or three years ago?
Uh, it was, uh, twenty, it was approved in, uh, June, June seventeenth of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Wow.
I just happened to look this morning.
Yeah.
Nah, you remembered.
Yeah.
So over two years ago.
Yeah, well, I, no, they, I had, I had, was hired one week prior, so that's one, that's the only reason why I know.
Yeah.
The first meeting I came to.
And we, we approved their project, but it was just some
Uh, yeah.
technical difficulties, sort of, they didn't wanna give us the surety at the time.
It was, yeah, the surety was one, and something about the connection with CMP was another one and...
Yeah, so now they're coming back to us.
Yeah.
It's downsized.
Yeah.
I don't remember what the actual acreage was of the, of the first one, but I believe they were saying that it was moving away from the, um, you guys had some concerns about the wetlands areas and, and stuff like that, I think they were moving it further away from that to be less impact in that area. Don't quote me on that one, though, I could be completely wrong. I honestly haven't had a chance to really review it much right now.
Yeah, yeah.
This has been sent to North Star as well.
Yeah, good.
So, he's in review and I might have him come to that meeting, I'm not hundred percent positive yet.
Well, that, um, that vote that's coming up on, um, the, uh, the power grid and everything, the power company grid, uh, vote that's coming up here in November, would that have any impact on any of this?
I don't know, I'm not too sure.
Do you think?
I don't know.
Just wondering.
I don't vote.
We should ask the applicant, we can ask the applicants, they might know.
Yeah.
You good? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.